Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular Town Council meeting for the Yountville Town Council on Tuesday, July 16th, 2019. Welcome to those in the audience here and listening and watching somewhere else. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dorman?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here.
Let it be known on the record that Councilmember Durham Becker is absent and she's excused.
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And just for the, we're going on to the adoption of our agenda. We are most likely going to be, I'm not asking to change the agenda because we want to handle it where it's listed, but we are very likely going to continue to another meeting of the Item 8B, Accessory Dwelling Units Impact Fees. And when we get to that item, we'll explain why. So that's not an official adoption or a change, so I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Some of...
Second.
And our electronic voting seems to be working. Seems to be working.
Working. Almost.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that verbally passes. Public comment. On anything not on tonight's agenda, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing no one come forward, we're going to move on to our consent calendar items, Items 6A through E. Not knowing of any to be pulled, is there action on that item?
Move adoption of the consent agenda.
Already hit the button. Buttons don't work.
Okay, that, was that Councilmember Muller then made that motion?
Uh, she hit the button.
No, but she said she hit the button. Doesn't matter. Let's go with Councilmember Muller and Vice Mayor, I think, is about to second that.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That consent calendar passes. Now we get right to our presentation, as stated here. Presentation regarding the California Public Utilities Commission's limousine enforcement. Now, we have our Deputy Lombardi here. I see a couple other folks in uniform. I think we have more than just this one presentation. Do we have an introduction as well?
I guess, so we have Sergeant John Holman that you know?
If we could, if we could do it on the microphone for everyone, as I said, around the world that's watching and listening.
Hi. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. And we have Sergeant John Holman from the Sheriff's Department, who's assigned to the town of Yountville. And then we have Lieutenant Eric Swift, who is the Lieutenant for Patrol.
Great. Welcome. Yes.
Okay.
Welcome. We don't get to see you at the mic very often, so this is, this is good.
No. Thank you for having me here tonight to talk about the enforcement for vehicles for hire. I decided to, can we go to the first slide? So, why I decided to conduct this type of enforcement? I saw that there was a large volume of Uber and Lyft traffic, limousines, party buses, and charter buses coming through town. I found when I had issues with these vehicles or any of the drivers, I lacked the proper knowledge and training to effectively and efficiently deal with them. I noticed it was a niche in law enforcement, which was not enforced much outside the California Public Utilities Commission. And the reason for that is they'd have a lack of funding and lack of officers to enforce it. An example is the gentleman I deal with, with the CPUC. His responsibility, area of responsibility is about a quarter of the state, so it's pretty large. As you see in the photograph up here, you'll see the different types of limo buses and stuff that we deal with. The Sprinter van on the left seems to be the more popular. That's, I'm starting to see a lot more of because it's more economical for the mom-and-pop limousine services. We also have some stretched limousines, but those are slightly, slowly being phased out. And then we have some party buses, charter buses, and then SUVs, vans, and Lincoln Town Cars. Next slide, next slide, please. The training I did, I worked with the CPUC to learn their codes. Certainly. So I worked with them to learn their codes and the vehicle codes, learn how to apply these vehicle codes to the vehicles, the drivers, and the companies that come through town. After doing some enforcement in conjunction with the CPUC, we hosted some impromptu trainings for some of the outside agencies like NAPA and St. Helena. We came up with a system, too, to minimize the report-writing time for myself and investigative time. These type of investigations usually take a lot of follow-up and a lot of time. I'm assigned to the town of Yountville, my responsibility is to the town of Yountville, so there's other things that I have to do. So I work with the DA's office and the CPUC to basically boil it down to writing a report of why I'm contacting these drivers or companies and putting my probable cause in and then forwarding it off to these agencies, and they do all the follow-up work to it. So what and how I conduct my enforcement? Basically, I make consensual contact with these companies and drivers, or I do enforcement stops. I make sure that the drivers have the proper licensing for their vehicles that they're driving. If they're driving a vehicle that can contain more than 10 people, then they have to have a commercial Class A or Class B license. Anything that, that holds anything less than 10 people, you can drive with a Class C. Insurance is another issue that's very important that they have. I make sure they have a way bill and trip ticket. I don't know if you guys know what those are, but basically, it's a contract between the company and the consumer, and it shows that it's a legitimate transaction. It'll show the customer's name, where they're picked up, all the stops that they're going to make during the day, what time they're to return, the destination, the location they're going to return to, and the cost. Any driver, Uber, Lyft, or limo, charter bus, has to have a way bill, and they have to present it to law enforcement if requested. I also inspect, when I'm working with the CPUC, I also inspect to make sure that the limos and vehicles have the correct number of exits. In regards to limo, stretched limousines, I mentioned they're kind of being phased out because there are certain restrictions that they have to have, or certain modifications that they have to have. Anything manufactured after 2015, they're required to have three doors, so the occupants inside can escape. Anything manufactured prior to 2015, they have to have pop-out windows and/or a pop-out sunroof. And all those exits have to be labeled. They also have to have fire extinguishers, make sure that the, and I make sure that the driver knows where his fire extinguisher is, it's accessible to him, and if the passenger's there, make sure they know where the fire extinguisher is. And they're required to be at least a five-pound fire extinguisher. When I'm doing these enforcement stops, if there are people in the vehicle, I make sure that the maximum occupancy for the vehicle is not exceeded. Sometimes I find that. I'll find a limousine that's rated for nine passengers, including the driver, will carry 12, 13 people. When that occurs, that driver's supposed to have a Class A or Class B license. And if they don't, then they're not licensed, properly licensed. The enforcement action I take. So my goal, and the goal of the CPUC and the DA's office, is to get these companies into compliance. We're not looking to put them out of business. We want to make sure that they're safe. I can take enforcement action by citing the driver, if that's necessary, or filing charges on the company. The CP, the CPUC, the DA, and I, again, work together to bring these companies into compliance and to make sure these companies that aren't legitimate are not operating. If you get, if I have to take CPUC enforcement action, or I cite them for their code sections, all their code sections are misdemeanors, which can bring heavy fines. CDC sections or California Vehicle Code sections are infractions. I talked a little bit about Uber and Lyft. As you can see up here on the board, up on the TVs, you can see that the carrier IDs that they have, I'm sure everyone's seen them. Uber and Lyft are required to have carrier IDs in their front windows and back windows, and I make sure that they're in compliance with that. If they don't, then they're not in compliance, I'll stop and I'll talk to them and I'll, I'll tell them, hey, you're required to have these certain things while operating. Some things you want to know for those that are listening out there in the audience. If you order Uber or Lyft, look at your app. Make sure to keep yourselves and your loved ones safe. Make sure that the vehicle that you're getting into is the same description that's in your app. Make sure the license plate that's on your app is on the vehicle. And make sure you know the name of the driver from your app. Ask the driver, hey, what's your name? If it's, his name's John Smith, and his, and, or if you ask the driver's name and he says, I'm Bob, I'm Bob Johnson, and your app says John Smith, don't get in the car. So, next one. Okay, so things to know about vehicles for hire. On large buses, limousines, and SUVs, things like that, they're going to require to have a TCP number. Basically, that's a transportation charter party number. You're going to want to see that on the front of the vehicle and on the back of the vehicle for limos, SUVs, Lincoln Town Cars. That's where they'll place their carrier IDs. On buses, they're typically on the left and right side of the bus, and they usually have a company name. When I'm looking at these vehicles, I want to make sure I can see those TCP numbers, at least 50 feet away, that they're clear and visible, and they're not the same color as a car. So if it's a black car, I want to see white TCP numbers. Again, you're asking, you want to know as a customer, from the customer's side of it, you want to know, are they licensed and insured, and who are you riding with? In the, in the year and a half I've been doing some enforcement with this stuff, I found drivers that were convicted felons, that have had firearms, that had warrants, that are operating vehicles that are not in compliance, that are not insured, and the companies have been suspended or revoked. So if you want to make sure that you're not going to fall victim to that, there's a website, if someone can click on that, there's a website that the average person can go on, and, as soon as it pops up here. So it's called the Transportation Carrier Lookup. So you want to make sure that the passenger carrier, little button there is black, and then you want to go to the carrier ID. So when you're chartering these companies, you're going to ask their basic information, but you want to get their TCP number if they have it. You'll put the TCP number in. So I've got a TCP number we can put in, if you'd like. It's, if you don't mind inputting 14726, and then click the submit button. So as a non-law enforcement person, this is what's going to pop up. You're going to see that the passenger carrier ID comes up. You're going to see the carrier status, which is important to note, is active. You're going to see the carrier name, and then you're going to see the carrier doing business as. So you'll see, this one here has Bao, if I pronounce it right, Bao, Wine Tour, Sonoma, and then off to the right, it's other, other names where they have, they're operating under. You're going to want to make sure that the authority, that they have the Class B certificate that's, that shows active and not suspended or revoked. And then, in this case, this company can also do sightseeing charters. And if that's listed there, you want to make sure it says active. If you scroll down a little bit, the most important thing you want to know as a customer is that they have PL and PD insurance, and then, of course, if it's a large company, that they have workers' compensation. Couple of things that I run into is a lot of companies that'll operate, they'll have, like Mike and Jim, as listed on the, on the CPU website as owners, but they'll have other people driving their cars, and they don't provide workman's compensation. And so I've run into a lot of, a lot of that. So that, again, gets forwarded to the CPUC and the DA's office. The insurance is another important thing. I don't know if you guys heard about the crash between a limo bus and the wine train? That gentleman didn't have, he wasn't a legitimate company. He used another company's name, another company's TCP number, and didn't have the proper insurance. So you can imagine the kind of things that are coming out of that now. So that's why, that's one, this is one way to protect yourself. If we can go back? Thank you. So how does this benefit our community? How's it benefit Yountville? Ensures that we have properly licensed drivers, for the, properly licensed drivers for the vehicles that they drive. It means that we get professional drivers. Now, when you get commercial driver's license for these limousines and buses, usually, my experience has been nine out of 10 times, there are people that drive commercially for a living. They're either currently driving or retired. So that means, it translates for me to fewer parking violations and fewer moving violations that I have to deal with. Most of the people where I've towed limos and impounded them for 30 days with a CPUC, I found that it resulted in car stops from stop signs or pedestrian violations, illegal parking. That's usually how I run into them. So again, it keeps, and this also keeps, this enforcement also keeps the non-legitimate drivers out of our community, because they're afraid of being caught, they're afraid of the fines. Some of the fines start at $5,000 and go up. If there's multiple violations, then the fines double. And again, when I, again, when we work with the CPUC and the DA's office, if we do find a company that's out of compliance, they do work with the company so that they don't, they don't bear the full weight of the, of the fine. They reduce the fine, and again, work to get them back into compliance. Legitimate, illegitimate companies, they suffer the consequences. Again, this keeps our local community safe, and the guests and the people that enjoy the benefits that we have and the things that we have in this town safe. So that's why I do this enforcement. Thank you for the opportunity to tell you about what I do.
Thank you. What, if any questions from council? I think Councilmember Durham has a question about those parking tickets he gets in front of his house, but that's a different issue. Different issue.
No, I wanted to thank you for this, because I hope that, I would hope that the majority of the, our community that was here from 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock can get this information, because I think this plays into exactly what we were talking about, and this is a huge aspect of this. So thank you very much. This is very timely as well. Thank you. Welcome.
I'll make sure I get the duck and share it to the chamber, and we can distribute it to the audience.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, did you have a question?
Yes. Thank you, Deputy Lombardi. How many Ubers and Lifts do you see, and do you see a trend to them increasing?
It depends. When I was on the other side of the week, when I worked from Wednesday to Saturday, I saw an increased number of Uber and Lifts on Fridays and Saturdays. And midsummer, early summer, I saw a lot of increase in the limousines and the charter vehicles or vehicles for hire coming through town. On the side of the week I'm on now, on Sunday through Wednesday, it's not as much, but there are still a number of limousine-type services that do come through town.
Thank you.
The question I have for you, and I'm not sure if you can dive this deep into the business model of these rideshares, but with the different layers of driver and vehicle, the more expensive, higher-end, black cars, for example, would have required, I believe, professional drivers, maintenance schedules, and all that. But the lower-level ones, can you speak to whether they do? And do you, kind of to the Vice Mayor's point, how many of those lower-level drivers that might be somebody just trying to make a few extra dollars, that doesn't even know what their responsibilities are, or choose to maybe not follow them all?
So, so most of the drivers that I run into, they, they know the system. I've gone, when I was, when I was training myself, I went to the CPUC website, and I read what was required. So these drivers that are driving, they know what's required of them. When we started doing this enforcement, we started, we saw all these drivers that were not legitimate, and they heard that we were doing this enforcement, stay out of the area. But the ones that were working and were legitimate, they go through the process, they get their licensing. The vehicles are inspected by CHP, they make sure that they have the proper exits, that things are functioning, and they have all the requirements that the state, that the state asks drivers and companies to have. The ones that aren't legitimate, they, they know they're not doing the right thing, and they, they try and do stuff under the table. And so...
Then you catch them.
And I catch them.
Good.
And, and then their vehicles get impounded for 30 days on top of the fines and things that they'll have to pay.
Great. Well, thank you. Sergeant? Yes?
So when we're dealing with Uber and Lyft drivers, we do end up stopping quite a few of them, and we treat that like we do most of the stops. Education, over enforcement, if we can. So if you have the average John Holman driving Uber and Lyft, just trying to get by, and this is part of what I do to make money, and legitimately seems like that I don't exactly know some of the rules, we will educate. If this is someone we've seen a few times, and they continue to block the road or fail to stop at stop signs, or don't have a way bill, trip ticket, then we take enforcement. So we do, we try to keep that pretty even-handed.
And Debbie, have you, in your experience, have seen that we're getting better compliance with people not stopping in the middle of the street? It seems like we have a couple spots that are just, we don't know if they're ever going to get better.
I don't know if we get 100% compliance, but the word does get out when we start doing enforcement stops, whether we try and educate, whether we educate or whether we cite. And like Sergeant Holman said, we do work, try and work with the drivers to make sure that we educate them, and if we do see them again, then we take enforcement action. But we do try and give that opportunity for them to learn. It depends. The drivers that are from out of the area that I run into outside of Napa County seem, seem to be the ones I, I run into that, that, that don't pay attention to the signs. And again, if a couple, if I run into them a couple times, I'll just take enforcement action.
I noticed our town manager was saying, no, it's not getting better, and at least not on Washington Street.
Yeah, I think that, it, it's always going to be there, so, so will we.
Well, thank you for the report, and also for all the work you're doing out there to make the conditions better.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Lieutenant and Sergeant.
Just one other. Vice Mayor Dorman had asked, what are the observations regarding the frequency, the frequency of the rideshare drivers? Anecdotally, and this is just from visual observation, we're seeing a higher number. And what you're also seeing, the consequences of the increased number of drivers, is they're adding to the congestion on Washington and Yount, because they're circulating, and then they're also taking part of the parking supply, which we didn't talk a whole lot about in today's discussion, while they're waiting in between rides or trying to, you know, they drop somebody off, and they're waiting a bit to see if they're going to catch one. So there are some real consequences that are unintended with regard to the increase in Uber and Lyft drivers.
Okay, thank, thanks again for the report. Appreciate it. We're going to go on to our first public hearing, Item 8A, as it states, introduction, first reading of residential units and building heights. Who are we starting with? Sandra?
Good evening. Yes.
Yes.
Would you mind receiving the title of, I'm waving?
How about I just go with Item 19-2210 Municipal Code Amendment? Does that work?
Yes.
Because once we get the staff report, then we'll open the public hearing on that item.
Okay. Good evening. So as you, oh, we don't want that to show. Would you fix it for me? I'm sorry. So over the last few years, the town has updated its accessory dwelling unit rules and regulations based on state law. And that state law clearly favors the construction of accessory dwelling units. And one of the items that the state prescribed for the town is that an ADU over an existing garage is to be permitted when a minimum five-foot side and rear yard setbacks can be met. And the staff report goes into detail how that's very different from the prior rules for residences where a five-to-eight-foot, five-foot setback was required, or a 15-to-20-foot rear yard setback was required, depending on the zoning district and the height of the structure. And so these rules made a dramatic change. So when the item came before the Town Council, the recommendation was that the ADU be a story and a half. And the reason for that story and a half was to really limit the massing for a structure that was much closer to property lines than would have otherwise been permitted. Five feet versus eight, 15 or 20. And so that one-and-a-half-story structure had some unique characteristics. It had sloping ceilings, it used dormers, it had lower sidewall ceiling heights. And when the item was brought before council, staff had recommended a five-foot plate height. But during discussion, at that council meeting and with input from the public, that was ultimately increased to seven feet. A resident who was interested in constructing an ADU over detached garage has appealed to the council to consider a minimum eight-foot plate height, and so those rules are the ones that are now before you. But I, I wanted to share these photos, which really helped to shed light on what the quality of the interior space can be. And in each of these photos, you see a plate height, which is this lower elevation on the sides, that is something much less than the seven feet that are allowed in the code. And you see the sloping ceilings, and some of these you'll see the use of dormers and other characteristics. And while this is not your traditional ceiling height that you would find in a more single-family residential home, it does provide a housing opportunity for a certain type of underrepresented family that isn't otherwise found in the single families in town. So let me just quickly run through these, so you have a chance to look at them. And the reason these work as livable spaces is because, in most cases, the ceiling and the trusses are exposed, and so you have that interior plate height that can go up to nine to 12 feet. So even though the walls are a little lower on the edge, it provided that space. So we, we took this question to the ZDRB as to whether the town was being too restrictive in that seven-foot plate height elevation for that second floor. And we, we reminded the ZDRB that we were regulating second-floor plate height, which was a little more unusual than the full building height, because a detached garage can have a different plate height for the first floor. It can be eight feet, it can be up to 12 feet. So by determining that second-floor plate height, we're able to keep the building as low as we can based on those existing conditions of the garage. And the benefit to that is it keeps the building low for the adjoining neighbor who is just five feet away. The ZDRB thought that that was an odd approach to the problem, and that what we should really do is regulate exterior plate height and to give property owners and building owners more flexibility to design that interior space. So they said, why don't you come back with a recommendation for the minimum plate height that would be necessary to achieve an interior ceiling of eight feet at that exterior wall? And so what that amounts to is a minimum eight-and-a-half foot for the garage plate height level, about one-and-a-half to two feet for the, the roof, the floor assembly between the two, plus the eight foot. And that would bring us to a plate height of 18 feet, which is two feet less than that allowed for a two-story residence of 20 feet, but it's slightly higher than what would have been allowed under the existing rules. So we are bringing that to you on a 5-0 recommendation, that it be approved from the ZDRB, and the revisions are in your staff report with the proposed ordinance amendments.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Durham?
So if you could, one thing, moving back, you had said that originally it was, it was brought to us that it would be five feet, and we agreed on seven feet. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And so where, so someone or some, one thought that five feet was acceptable?
Correct. The five-foot recommendation was strongly supported by Architect Jared Denton, who was then a member of the ZDRB, and who gave the opinion that plate height is, and the maximum plate height is the single biggest determinant of impacts on an adjoining neighbor, because each foot in plate height presents an impact to a neighbor more so than roof assembly or other measures that can mitigate massing.
So, and to be clear, we're talking five feet originally, which was then adjusted to seven feet, and now we're asking for...
The rules establish a maximum plate height that would essentially allow an eight-foot interior plate height at the exterior wall.
And then to move to eight, eight foot. So I just want to understand something. Once again, the five feet, though, was deemed livable, usable, for an ADU unit, which is, all we're talking about is an ADU unit. We're not talking about the second story of a, of a family home. We're talking about an ADU unit which would ultimately be over a garage?
Yes. Only an ADU over an existing garage. And I would like to clarify one point. One of the reasons the council increased it from five feet to seven feet for the plate height meant that it would be easier to meet the building code requirement that a minimum of 150 square feet of that area is at least seven-and-a-half square feet, or seven-and-a-half feet vertical. And so that made it easier to achieve that standard.
And then you mentioned, and I just want to reiterate, that, so we're talking about the plate height of an ADU over garage, but there's, there, there's not a set consistency in this community for the base of that garage, correct? Of what would be the base for the ADU unit?
Right. Garages can vary anywhere from eight foot to 12 foot, generally.
So no matter, no matter what that base of, height of the garage, this could still be eight feet above that?
Yes.
With a five, with a five-foot setback?
Mm-hmm. Well, this could even be taller if...
Uh-huh. And so if you... And so if you.
It ensures a minimum of eight feet based on the minimum eight-and-a-half foot for the garage.
And then with, there was the ADU, one of the first ones that came to us on appeal, on, at the end of Jefferson Street across from Vandeleer. I apologize.
Oh, right.
That was a five-foot setback?
That was, yes.
And that was one of the bigger issues, was the height and the massing of it with the neighbors, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Mueller?
So you explained nicely why we're talking about this. It's something that was, came up on appeal and then it was discussed at the ZDRB. And also, if somebody comes to town, wants an ADU, it's a ministerial action from the Planning Department, correct?
That is right, where they meet all the ADU standards, it's approved at staff level.
So there really is no way that, depending on what would come forward, that you don't really have any discretion except using what's in the ordinance to make that decision. Neighbors aren't allowed to come and say, "But wait a minute." Or you don't really, if they have the tall garage, they could still go up this high. So this is, this is why I kind of remember that, you know, it was talked about quite frequently because the main thing, my point is, is once we approve any changes or not, this is all then just a ministerial action by our Planning Department because it's an ADU.
That's right, yes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
And that's state law?
That's right.
Not our local ordinance?
Correct.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Director Liston. So at the seven-foot plate height, under the current ordinance, that allows for standard cabinets, standard doorways, correct?
The lower end of standard, yes, because there is a range.
And depending on the size of the garage, it might be built over, the ceiling height at peak could be nine-and-a-half to 12 feet.
Over a single-car garage, yes.
Nine-and-a-half and 12 over a double-car garage. And I think you told me that a seven-foot plate height is standard for one-and-a-half-story homes?
No.
Okay.
It would be taller generally.
Okay.
Eight foot is more common.
And at this time, we do not have any ADUs that we know of built with a seven-foot plate height. So we don't know of any problems existing.
That's right.
And then I want to, you put in your staff report to the ZDRB in April, "Plate height, more than overall height or shape of the roof line, has the ability to impact neighbors because it is the vertical elevation that has the greatest potential to limit light, air, et cetera."
Yes.
Fair quote?
Fair quote.
And the ZDRB that originally, with architect Denton on it, that originally approved the five feet, and the ZDRB that most recently wanted to look at full building height, those are differently configured boards, right? We've had some movement.
Membership has changed, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Durham?
One follow-up question. When the vice mayor asked, "We have had no ADUs at seven feet." It's because none of the ADUs that have been built have been over garages. They're all additional dwelling units from the ground up. Thank you.
Yes.
So I'm gonna try to get some simplification of how tall we're talking about. So let's not talk about plate heights and all that. How tall can that ADU be if we say yes to this total? I know there's a range.
So it allows a plate height of 18 feet, that's to the roof line, and then the roof line can extend up to 24 feet?
From the ground?
From the ground.
So the potential is a 24-foot-high former garage, now dwelling unit, within five feet of somebody's shared fence?
Yes.
And there are no limits that we're allowed by state law to say where windows can go, where balconies could go, or any other features that could?
Right, that was not prescribed by state law, but we did include some provisions in our local ordinance that windows and decks, et cetera, should take efforts to maintain privacy.
But if, as Councilmember Mueller pointed out, this is a ministerial action, how do we invoke that local ordinance, which is try your best not to impose a privacy issue on your neighbor?
It's reviewed by staff to whether it complies with the code or not.
There's no appeal process if, if the neighbor disagrees with staff, too bad, right?
I believe there is an appeal process.
There is an appeal process to the council.
Yep. Okay. Well, we'll see where the conversation takes us. So the maximum would be 24 feet total. That's not livable space, that's to the tip-top of the roof.
Right, exterior roof.
Exterior roof. But that's, so that would be a visual impact, not just a privacy concern with shade and massing, et cetera. Okay. Well, I'll formally open the public hearing and invite, I know we have members in the audience that would like to address this. So who would like to be first? Welcome.
Thank you to the council for listening and giving me the opportunity here. I'd like to thank also the ZDRB for listening and giving their recommendation.
If you could, just for the record, before Eddie asks.
Al Perry, 2930 Lincoln.
Thanks.
And thank you to Sandra and staff for putting this together. I thought it was a pretty thorough job and thoughtful and complete. I like the recommendation from the ZDRB. I think it's a nice balance and a logical decision. It's reasonable, I believe, for someone who wants to build an ADU over a garage. And it also takes into consideration the neighbors. I guess what I'd like to reiterate is the way the ordinance is set up now is inconsistent with everything else that we have, from my understanding. Single-level and two-story homes, they do have plate height limits, but they are exterior plate height limits. So this is unusual to have an interior plate height limit. I've never seen it before. An example, my original plans with an eight-foot plate height, the total height of the building that you had asked for, Mayor, is 22 feet, 7 inches. A foot and a half below the 24-foot maximum, okay? And I did that in order to be considerate of the neighbor and all that. And the reason I chose eight-foot for a plate height was because I wanted to be consistent with my main home. And there's a lot of plate heights now, newer homes are nine-foot and more, but I wanted it to be consistent with my main house. So those are the reasons why I've asked to do that. And again, just the lack of consistency on the ordinance of being, of limiting the interior plate height is just unusual because potentially the garage could have a higher plate height than the upstairs living area, which I just find odd. So in my case, I've taken everything into consideration, including the neighbors, to reduce the massing because, again, my overall building height is 22 feet, 7 inches, with an eight-foot plate height. And I think, you know, cabinetry and just normal living area would be more desirable with an eight-foot plate height. So that's what I'd like to say. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Murray. Who else would like to comment or ask questions? Okay.
I'm Kathleen Brannon.
Could you lower that microphone, please? Thank you.
Kathleen Brannon, 6786 Jefferson Street. I don't know if you got the note from my husband, Michael Bork.
I was gonna mention it after the folks, now, go ahead, you take care of it.
I'll just read it because he can't be here tonight and he speaks, I don't usually. So I'll just, he is asking the council to approve the plate height of eight feet for an ADU over an existing detached garage. I agree with many of Ms. Liston's comments and would add one additional reason for allowing an extra foot. "The costs of building an ADU, especially in California, will prevent many who consider building. And maximizing usability and beauty of the space would encourage more to undertake their project. Higher-quality living space adds to the well-being of all of our residents." So, having just gone through it, not over a garage, but, you know, adding, you know, the space that can be inside is just so important to your, your living environment and for the people that live there and, and are a part of the community. So that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Knight. I think you're the only one that stayed from the parking workshop. I'm not sure what that gets you, but thank you.
Thank you. Eric Knight, 6638 Jefferson. I just wanted to speak in support of the changes for the, raising the plate height, primarily because I think that you have to look at the purpose of the ADU. I mean, I have a detached garage. The concept for building above the garage for, for, for me would be either a generational building, adding generational use for the, for the home down the road or, or to provide a living space for, a, a living space for someone that lives, that wants to live and work in Yountville. And I think the problem with these lower plate heights where they may work when it's a, an attic space connected to other living space where there's kitchen and dining, but you can't build a, a unit, it seems, with a, with these shorter plate heights where you can have kitchens and bathrooms and make it a livable space for someone that wants to live and work in the community or for someone that may be adding it for, for generational to extend the use of their property for family members and things like that. So I support the recommendations. And it just seems to me at some point, maybe, I was trying to think of this as you were talking, maybe the issues before staff would be recommendations for the, the roof line or the, looking at the rise of the, of the roof and looking at ideas of the design of the roof to help reduce that overall building height, as the other gentleman mentioned, that I think you could come up with different roof designs that would keep the height down, have less impact. And I would hope neighbors, too, would take into consideration issues of, of windows and things like that, which I know in the experience I've had in the last few years, I know the council, that staff has asked people to put either obscure glass or things like that that, that's to, to allow for privacy for a neighbor. There may be design issues like that that people could do to help or put windows that are tall, transom-type light at the, at the height of the ceiling to allow light into a unit, but not necessarily create, you know, create issues where you're looking into someone's backyard. So thank you for the changes and I, I think it's a good change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Anyone else? Seeing no one else come forward, I'll close the public hearing and entertain discussion by council. Councilmember Durham?
I have some questions based on the comments that were made of staff. First of all, with Mr. Knight's comment about hopefully they'll come in with other roof designs, once again, I'm trying to understand, this is ministerial. So if they meet the parameters of this seven, seven-foot plate height, or now what they want eight-foot, what we're asking to change to is eight-foot, they don't have to do another roof design? And if it falls within just the parameters of the guidelines, then it has to be okayed?
Well, we do have some design guidelines built into the ADU ordinance. And that's that the architecture and the roof line and the massing has to be consistent and compatible with the main dwelling. And we've taken that to mean that you should have the same roof pitch and have those same qualities. So we're looking for the same thing. If they came in and proposed a flat roof, we would say that's inconsistent with the design of the neighborhood because we just don't see flat-roofed houses.
Okay. What about the ordinance is inconsistent for one- and two-story properties? The plate heights based on exterior, but for the ADUs, the interior plate height is used. Was there a reason, original reason for that?
Yes, by establishing the minimum livable interior space, it was intended to get an ADU that is as low as possible based on the existing condition of the garage.
Was that limited to the five-foot setback or is it?
And limited to that five-foot setback, exactly.
So if a detached garage was further away than five feet, that restriction did not apply?
That's a good point. If you can meet the setbacks in the zoning and design ordinance, you, you're not held to that limitation. You can go to the full 20-foot plate height and 28-foot building height. But where you can't meet those, this lower standard is in effect.
Thank you.
Is there, along with that, I'll just ask this follow-up. Is the ADU required to have a, I'm calling, I'm writing it down as a secondary component, but that's not the right term, less height massing than the primary residence or not? It's not required?
Well, the overall height is less, yes.
It's required to be lower than the primary residence?
By four feet.
Whatever that primary residence is?
Oh.
Two-story, primary residence, that's whatever the maximum height would be for the primary residence, does that ADU that has a five-foot setback have to be lower than that or is there no?
It's not explicit as to that standard, but it is by default based on what you see standard plate heights for buildings are. You normally see nine-foot plate height for the first floor and eight-foot for the second floor. And that's greater than you'd see for a garage and the standards that we currently have in effect or even for the ones that are proposed.
Didn't you say that the garage had a range of, maybe I misheard that, the?
Oh, right. So there is a range, although they tend to be on the lower end here in Yountville, yes.
Okay. Other questions? Councilmember Mueller?
And I remember, I don't have all the exact details, when we discussed this, I do know, we talked about it quite extensively. We also had a discussion, discussion about how that would change the, the square foot use within the ADU when we went from the five-foot to the seven-and-a-half feet. Do you recall what that was? And ultimately, would there be any increase in the square footage if we went to an eight? Because of the slant?
No, that is a, that's a tough question. When it's five foot or less that had originally been proposed, part of the flooring area is excluded because it doesn't meet the minimum standard for habitability. At seven foot, that doesn't come into play because you're close enough to that seven-and-a-half foot.
Okay, all right, I think I.
And then there was a second part to your question, what was it?
Well, yeah, and the impact that would have on eight, but that, when you answered the seven, I remember that now as being part of a lot of the discussion that we had in terms of having all the usable space when you went to that height.
Yes.
Versus the five. Okay, thanks.
Questions or comments, Vice Mayor?
I have comments, but no questions.
Okay, we can get to comments.
Okay. So I'm also harkening back to when we first heard this. And I know it's been said, but I just want to reiterate, we did not, as a council, decide one day we wanted to put close to a two-story mass on a five-foot lot line. That was mandated to us by state law. And my recollection is that by focusing on the plate height, that is, we were consciously trying to minimize, to make not just minimum livable space at five feet, but livable, good livable space at seven feet. But we were trying also to consciously minimize the impact on the neighbors because it's five feet away. So we weren't saying everybody build as tall as they can. We were trying to hit that compromise where we allow people who want to build an ADU, hopefully for a rental, although it doesn't have to be, but hopefully for a rental or generational. We wanted to make a space for them to say, "You can live here full-time, but your neighbors also are taken into consideration." And as I've thought about this, I've really gone back and forth. And in a vacuum, one foot doesn't sound like so much. But if you're sitting in your backyard in your lawn chair and you're looking up at something that's five feet away, I think one foot probably looks like a lot in the massing. So I have not heard anything this evening. As I look at the history of it, with a ZDRB vote in favor of five feet, a council vote in favor of seven feet, a change in the. in favor of seven feet, a change in the ZDRB, nothing before us to say somebody has done this and it doesn't work. I don't see on the facts or the policy really, a need to change the ordinance at this time.
Okay, other comments? I know previously there were just questions from Councilmember Mueller or Councilmember Durham. Councilmember Durham, comments?
I think at least once every other meeting, I get to tell the story of my father who built seventy homes in Napa during his lifetime, and I was always surprised by the fact that he was the first one to scold me when I said, well, we should get an exception or I'm going to vote for this because it's an exception. It was funny to me, he, he, he did not see a place for exceptions. And you know, this is one of those difficult situations where Al and I spoke yesterday, we're, we're neighbors, we're, we're all neighbors. But we're all neighbors and I, I've had an issue with this AD, ADU law since it was passed down to us from Sacramento because we are a unique community. And it is difficult, once speaking to the, speaking to the planning department with, with these questions, that it's, it's a livable space, it's still a workable space. The, the presentations showed that as well. So, I, I, you know, I, I respect Mr. Knight's opinions in supporting it, but I also know that my property line is directly on the property line of my neighbor. And those five foot setbacks for everyone in Old Town definitely comes into effect, especially in the neighborhood that I live in. So, at this time, I do not see a reason to change this.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
I remember, seems like it was just yesterday, when we spent many, many hours discussing this whole thing and how it was all going to work and who is going to get to approve it and, you know, what was allowable, what were the state minimums, what do we want to do here? And I believe that as a council, we worked really hard to come to the most satisfactory and reasonable set of ordinances that we could that not only allowed the property owner to do this new implementation of, of state law, but, you know, also to be as respectful to the neighbors as possible. So, I think it's worked out well so far with all the applications that have come forward to the, the planning department. And I am going to have to find that what we have appears to be working now and the, any new compelling explanations or arguments to, to change that, I, I just haven't heard. So, I, I, I'm fine with our current ordinance as is.
Vice Mayor, did you have any further comments or you covered everything? I came into this, certainly not clear on where I was going to land on it, but as this discussion has gone on, I've gone back and forth, I don't know, half a dozen times for many of the reasons that the council has already stated, I'm, I think I'm leaning toward, it hasn't been shown to be an unintended restriction on the livability of the space, but I also recognize every time, whether I go to Sacramento or, or just read the latest article from any news agency, we are, continue our housing crisis. We are, by state law, required to allow ADUs over garages, and we are in a position where there's significant pressure to provide not only livable space, but attractive livable space. So, these units are actually being used. I remember when we had twenty-five units that were built into the expansion of Hotel Yountville, and they couldn't find people to move into them because they were too small. The apartments were too small. That changed over time, but it also restricted whom could move into those units. And I'm thinking, seven feet, sounds like that's enough for pretty much, maybe not everybody. Ironically, we have a couple of very tall people that have been here presenting this idea of supporting this. So, I'm, I'm still really torn and a little unsettled because we want these units to be viable. We want them to be, I, I'm not convinced that the cost, as was mentioned in one of the public comments, is the driving factor on needing an extra foot of, it's more than just headspace, I get that, it's more livable space entirely. So, I'm, I'm really still not sure which button I'm going to push on this. I do think that we are being compelled to encourage ADU construction and living units and putting a, a potential deterrent on those being built or being rentable, you know, gives me that pause. But I was a strong proponent of the privacy concerns that, that got us to this point with the seven feet, hesitating to even go higher than that. It worries me that there's the ability to go up to twenty-four feet within five feet of a yard line, a lot line. We're not other communities where entire residences are five feet from a property line next to another two-story house, it's five feet from a property line, and you can have a conversation at this tone through the windows at, you know, second story. That's not what we do here, thankfully. So, I'm very much torn. It's, it's basically, we're asked to judge the impact on a neighbor versus the impact on a property owner, and how do you do that? It does give me a little bit of comfort that the staff has the authority still to protect the privacy concerns, protect some of the design aesthetic concerns that would happen if we do increase this to eight feet. So, I'll push a button one way or another here. I mean, if there is a, a motion, I believe we have to have a motion one way or another, right? It's either to accept or deny the request. Gary, is that accurate?
Yes, correct.
I'm happy to make a motion then to see where we land and get back to the ordinance. I'll make a motion not to approve ordinance number nineteen dash four eighty-six, an ordinance of the town council of Yountville amending chapter eighteen point three six point oh two oh, the title eighteen of the Yountville municipal code regarding plate height of an accessory dwelling unit, ADU, above an existing garage. Did I do that the right way?
Hit the button?
I don't have a button, nothing's happening. Hold on.
It's still under presentations.
All right, so.
I've got mine under our public hearing.
I have no buttons.
Can you hit refresh? Everybody hit refresh? This is not intentional just to draw this out further, I believe me.
Okay, hit refresh.
Showing me on the correct page.
Sounds like I have a motion, I see with, so, okay.
So, councilmember has made a mo, councilmember Mueller has made a motion to deny. Do we have a second? We do have a second. Councilmember Durham, we are just waiting for our tablets to catch up to, it's not working. So, all in favor of the motion, which is to deny the change of the ordinance, please say aye.
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 I will vote no, so that does pass in terms of the denial. Three votes to one. Okay, sorry that that was complicated. But it works sometimes. Okay, so that handles item eight A. Item eight B is another public hearing, and I'm going to ask our town attorney to start this item. As I mentioned earlier, I just wanted to make sure that, that those folks in the audience were aware. Gary's going to explain what we're going to ha, what we're going to do with this item.
Yeah, Mayor and council staff recommends that the council continue this item to the August sixth meeting, so staff has additional time to review the underlying nexus studies and evaluate the various options to the council, so.
I knew you were going to make that very succinct, much more than, as we had talked about previously. I also wanted to point out, just for information for the audience, there is a Senate bill, SB thirteen, that just passed out of the local government committee last week, and it relates directly to this item, impact fees and a requirement of owner occupation. There is likely other legislation that's already in play as well, and so that's, that's impacting our ability to discuss this item since there may be a change in state law as we are potentially talking about this item. So, I think between those two issues, continuing this, and you recommend to a date certain it being a public hearing, and our next would be August sixth?
That's correct.
Okay, are there any questions from the council on this? Is that clear to those in the audience, what we're doing here? Okay.
I'll make that motion that we move this agenda item to a date certain, which would be August the sixth.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye? That passes unanimously. We will certainly be, we don't need to, Gary, do we need to repost that or, or not? We will, doesn't matter.
It will appear on the next agenda, of course, but the notice doesn't need to be reposted because this meeting tonight was continued to a date certain.
So, we haven't officially started the public hearing portion, just the staff report portion.
Yep.
Okay, so we will revisit this item on August sixth. Just making sure that our staff has caught up with us. Okay, I think we are. So, let's move ahead to item nine A, which is related to the Napa Valley Unified School District and their process creating a seven eleven committee and as it relates to the status of small schools, including Yountville Elementary School. And I believe, Steve, are you going to start this and then we'll hand it off?
Just very briefly, a few comments. The council had indicated that they wanted a little more information in terms of what was involved, what was the process timing, and a concern over whether possibly taking one of the spots by an elected official was supported by the local community. Since then, we've now learned that the Napa Valley Unified School District has established a application deadline of July twenty-fifth, and we have a handout on the table. They anticipate appointment in early August, and ironically, the, the committee will be meeting on mostly council meeting night dates, as we've learned its calendar. We currently have the likeliness that two of those meetings will not occur. We're dark the second August meeting, not likely to have the September third meeting at this point, but we put that schedule ahead of you. The district has announced a fairly tight schedule, so that's information for all of you to be aware of. The most timely change was that we had thought that the application period would extend into August, where now if, if the council is going to consider this, it needs to do so tonight or else the app, application period deadline will not be met.
And that was my fault for on the fly trying to confirm the, the deadline. It turns out, the page on the district website I found was in reference to the two thousand fifteen seven eleven committee that did have a September filing, application filing deadline. So, that was my error on that. We've since consulted directly with superintendent and found this schedule. So, I know, Vice Mayor, you had additional information to share?
Yes, thank you, town manager and mayor. I did, after the last meeting, councilmembers Mueller and Durham had asked for some input from some of our community of parents and coaches. So, I did have conversations with both the Yountville Elementary School Parent Teacher Association and Yountville Baseball, which is our Yountville Little League you have here. We have two letters, one from Michelle Dixon, president of the SPTA, and one from Tom Bardisono, who also is in our audience this evening, who is on the board of the Yountville Little League. Both are supportive of a council member applying, and both say that should a council member who applies be selected, they are ready, willing and able to work with that council member. And as I think the town manager mentioned, when the calendar for the proposed meetings came out, there are two of them, September seventeenth and October first, that do fall on council nights for us, but should we determine to support a council member, me, applying, and I'm assuming me because I volunteered, but whatever council member might apply, we would all need to kind of navigate how that might work with the overlapping commitments.
And, so I'm just following up in October, the first and the, so October first will be a potential conflict, assuming these dates also are adhered to. It could be that when the committee is formed, they may need to change those dates. So, October one would be a, a potential conflict. September seventeenth would be a conflict, just to reiterate. Any questions about the new information from either Councilmember Durham or Mueller?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I'm glad we extended this because I got an opportunity to research more about the seven by eleven committee, read the application and the website. So, I made a laundry list of things here, but I'm just going to go to one. I, I need an explanation from the, from, I, I don't, I still don't personally think that a council member should be on there because I think it politicizes the process. But while I appreciate the letter from the PTA and the Little League Board of Directors, I believe this is solely a council decision based on the activity of an individual council member representing the council at another government organization. So, specifically, our town council protocol, section nine point nine, titled representing majority decision versus individual opinion. If a member of the town council appears before another governmental agency or organization to give a statement on an issue affecting the town, the council member should first indicate the majority position and opinion of the council. Personal opinions and comments may be expressed only if the council member clarifies that these statements do not represent the position of the council. I simply don't know how this can happen if we send a single council member to this seven eleven committee. And to me, it creates an obvious difficult position for all those on this side of the process. I have the application here and it says, and also, I just, I suggest everybody read the seven by eleven application. It's not very encouraging to me. But we are committed to both inclusion and transparency in this process, and to that end, the committee's proceedings and deliberations will be open to the public and all minutes and recordings will be published on our direct website. So, also, under California laws, it designates the specific duties of a seven eleven committee. There's five of them, but C specifically states that cause to have circulated throughout the attendance area priority list of surplus space and real property and provide for hearings of community input to the committee on acceptable uses of space and real property. It baffles me, this whole process is about real estate and there's not much statement about any of the children involved. My point being though, is that I, especially with these protocols, I don't see where, where, how a council member can be on this governmental appointed position that's backed by all of us, and then with conflicts of interest depending on with how close we are to the schools and, and all these other things, it, it's just to me creating a very precarious position from, from the very first start. So, those are my concerns.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller, do you want to share any thoughts?
I think my thoughts are generally the same as the last time I did look at the application and immediately saw that I would be conflicted out because I live within because I live within 500 feet of the school, so I couldn't even participate. And I, I, I think I can speak for all of us, that this is, that we all have the same care and concern about our Yountville Elementary School for, we could just spend quite a bit of time listing all those reasons. So I'm, I'm sure we all feel the, the same about it. But I think by us nominating a, a single person that's going to represent all of us, when we would have so much input that we would like to make, it just doesn't feel like the same process that we undertake when we need to go out and study something and we nominate or council members put their name into nomination to be part of an ad hoc. Research goes out, sometimes it comes back quickly, sometimes it takes a long time. The information comes back to the council for further recommendation, we all get our input. This just isn't that type of situation. That being said, so I, I don't think this is the avenue for us as council members and leaders in the Yountville community to go about really supporting our school. I think that it would be certainly worthy of having further discussions about how we want to deal with this and how we do want to reach out and make our concerns heard, much like we did when this was happening four, five, six years ago, I can't remember the exact time. And council and specific members were very involved in, I think, you know, essentially saving the school at that time. And now we're, we're faced with this again. So I think we're more effective as a council, as a team. And that's how I would like for this to play out, rather than having one member that, that we nominate.
Okay, and I should have invited any member of the public, and I'll do that now before we continue. That would like to comment on this, since you're here in the audience listening to this, if anyone would. Certainly not Mr. Bartisono, I figured you might.
Hello, Tom Bartisono. I, I think the process is political, so I don't think there's any way to get, get away from it being political. But yeah, I, I, I just think it would be nice to have somebody in the council to speak, because you guys have a lot of connection with the community, you're easily accessible through the community. And then I think that feedback to the board would be beneficial. And I think that's kind of where I was looking at it from my point of view. Just personally, as well as talking with people from Yountville Little League. And I don't know if you want me to express my concern about the school going away or not, but I can get into that too, if you want.
Well, I'm pretty sure we know how you feel about that.
But I think, I think one of the things, like, it's gonna be, it's not only impacted just on the kids and the school itself, but then there's other issues too, like, there's a lot of people that work in the community. If you commute in or out of Napa Valley, there's a huge amount of people that live outside the valley that come and commute in Napa Valley and Yountville. It's nice that parents can bring their kids and drop them off to school. There's an after-school program for the kids, and that really supports the town itself. So it's really, there's really a unique relationship that the town and the school has together. And it's more than just a school where the kids go and they learn. It really supports a lot of the people that work here, it supports a lot of, well, just the community in general itself. So I guess that's my two cents, so thank you.
We share your thoughts, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Anybody else in the audience like to comment? Okay, Vice Mayor, you're, oh, didn't see it.
Thank you, sorry, Eric Knight. I did read the application too, and thinking, I'm interested, maybe possibly. But I guess why, I read, did, I did read through a lot of the issues of conflict of interest, so I don't know if the 500-foot rule applies to that. But I guess I was actually surprised in reading it, as Councilmember Durham said, there's a lot of discussion about potential decisions and recommendations by the school board for, for selling property. So one thing that concerned me, if there's a council member on there, and that's assuming, reading the application, that it's the Napa Valley Unified School District Board that appoints the committee. So you'd be putting them in a position of having to decide whether they appoint another, a council member. But I would, wouldn't want a, a council member then to be conflicted out down the road when you really want five council members. If something happened where there was an issue with the property, I would hope the town would be considering all their options, including purchasing property. And if a council member might be conflicted out because of their participation, it would limit your discussion on the council. So I, just, you know, conflict of interest rules are all about perception and, and it may be more than the rule. So that's the only thing I noticed in reading through it. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll encourage, or not I'll encourage, I'll ask Gary to give your legal opinion about Mr. Knight's comment.
Yeah, so the 7-11 committee, as he, as the member of the public just pointed out, is appointed by the Napa Valley Unified School District. That committee and the conflicts of interest and its compliance of the Political Reform Act is going to be governed by District Counsel for the school district. I want to specify that, so I'm speaking generally here on the rule for 500 feet. The general rule is that a council member can't participate in a government decision that affects real property within 500 feet of real property that they own, unless they've received permission from the Fair Political Practices Commission to do so. That permission takes a very long time to get, for anyone who's ever dealt with that commission before would know. So the general rule is not to participate in those decisions. The decision here tonight doesn't count towards that, of course, because you're only deciding to, whether or not to authorize someone to apply. And it doesn't ensure that anyone would ever make it on that committee in the first place. So that discussion can happen this evening. Future discussions, though, on the use of that property would implicate the same rule for this decision-making body.
In layman's, layperson's terms, would that conflict a council member that participates as an advisory committee member? Would they be able to participate if it becomes a land use or, or sale of the property?
No, is the short answer.
That is a short answer.
Yes. The reason why it wouldn't is because the types of things that require you to conflict out of a decision is a business interest, income, interest in real property, personal finances or finances of your family. So provided that the council member didn't have any of those types of conflicts of interest or financial interests in the property, merely being on the advisory committee in advisory capacity should not create a future conflict.
And it's also a committee that's not making final decisions about that type of action, whether it's a, a sale, lease or closure of a district facility.
Yeah, I, I do understand that under the Education Code, the 7-11 committee is purely advisory and that the board doesn't have to take those recommendations, it can go in a different direction. It will depend, though, slightly on the powers that are delegated to that 7-11 committee by the school board. So if it does have any independent decision-making authority at all, to use consultants to independently decide on staff or direct staff or things like spend money in any kind of capacity, it might transform into a hybrid advisory decision-making body. And that would change some of the rules that apply to it under the Political Reform Act and the like. And that's why I hedged my entry into this by saying it's gonna depend a little bit on the council for the school board and the powers that the school board delegates to that 7-11 committee in the first instance.
Would adequate protection in a scenario like that be recusal on that vote? Or the presence on the committee would, would potentially conflict that person?
So just so I understand the question, is the, is the question about the presence on that committee for a future decision of this council?
Yes.
Even under the scenario that I'm talking about, it would not conflict a future decision on this council.
Okay. So now, Vice Mayor, did you want to share additional comments about this?
I am, I hear what councilmembers Mueller and Durham are saying. I tend to disagree, because I think, and I'll use myself as an example. It's different when you're in the audience, talking to someone who's in a decision-making capacity, than when you are at the table and in the room, helping to craft a decision. And I, I agree, we all care about the school, obviously, we care deeply. And, and we care about it as it impacts our community, as Mr. Bartisono said. It's more than how many kids are gonna go there, how much does it cost, it's how does it impact our community? And that's why I volunteered to be on this committee. Because I think it's important for us, with somebody with a town view, to be in that room, rather than in that audience. Now, if we decide not to support anyone being on the committee, that's not going to change my approach to the project, except that I will be out writing a letter or out making public comment, rather than sitting in a room with decision-makers and trying to say, what if we thought about this? What if we thought about that? So, I mean, the chips are gonna fall where they fall, but that's why I volunteered to step up.
Thank you. And I'm gonna respectfully disagree with my colleagues, again, like I did the last time, councilmembers Durham and Mueller. I see it 180-degree opposite direction from the way, at least Councilmember Mueller, you were putting it. I think it's exactly the kind of role that we as elected leaders of this community should participate. Every one of us sits on other governmental agency bodies, either by volunteer or appointment by the council, representing our overall interests. I don't know that it's exactly the same, maybe it is. Napa Valley Transportation Authority, two of us are there, and we come and report back. Upper Valley Waste Management, we have one representative. LAFCO, we have one representative. I was on the Ag Protection Advisory Committee, one representative. I don't think that conflicts us or disqualifies us. So, I mean, the cannabis 2x6 with the county, another county governmental agency. I think we do this all the time. And this is a, a, a critical asset to our community, that it does matter. I know because I was in the, the school board meetings when we went through this five years ago, four years ago? And it does matter, frankly, it absolutely does matter when an elected official is there. And I get it, does it make it look like we have a bias? We all have the bias, right? We have the same bias that every parent's gonna have, whether they're coming from West Park, Alta Heights, Mount George or Yountville Elementary School. So I think we have a unique dynamic at play here that all four, or all three of the other schools are within the same general jurisdiction of the city of Napa. There isn't a single member that I remember from the Napa City Council that attended those school board meetings, for whatever reason. But this school has a unique place for our community. It isn't one of many schools in a big city, like American Canyon or Napa. And so I think we as council members can present the uniqueness in a way that a parent or another business interest or community member can't. So I do believe it was effective, speaking before the council as the mayor. It doesn't mean I can't, it doesn't mean that any of us can't still speak. But when you get to the public comment portion of the school meeting on August, well, August 8th is their decision on the 7-11 committee. But when we get to the final report on October 24th, if that's the first time they're hearing from us in a room full of very impassioned parents and other community members, I think we will have missed an opportunity. Whether it would have an effect or not, we can't be sure. But I would like to at least submit the opportunity with an application. And I do feel like the Vice Mayor is not only already aware of a lot of the issues, because we have met and we're going to meet again this Thursday, with the superintendent, two school board members and other staff of the district. So I think we already have an engagement with them that could just help with the 7-11 committee. Land use issues and some of the other categories that they're gonna be analyzing, I think, are sometimes foreign to a parent or a community member that's not used to it. And I think we're very well-suited in, in making those types of analyses. So I still strongly support applying. We don't even know if we're gonna be selected by the superintendent and the school board. But I still think it's worth a try. But it sounds like we might be split, like we were in our last meeting. But Councilmember Durham, did you have further?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna tell you exactly where I'm coming from. This whole process started with the Napa Valley Unified School District and our communication with them, with the letter from the signature of the two of you. And I don't like how this has played out. If you feel that you want to move forward, I will go ahead with it. But this is exactly where I'm coming from.
And that letter actually was signed...
I understand, I understand how it started, I understand where it ended, because it was called out. So this is part of my big issue with how this has played out. So if you want to put an application of our town council member in, then I will do it. But this is exactly where I'm coming from and the time and the effort that this council has had to spend on this.
Okay, and just to clarify, I wrote that letter that was to present to the school board and the superintendent. And I put the Vice Mayor's name on that initially, because the two of us had been the ones that were invited by the superintendent to meet with them and have dialogue. And so immediately after that, I wrote the letter that was showing our support for the elementary school. After further consideration, and it was absolutely appropriate, that the two of you said, what about us? You know, that it wasn't something that the Vice Mayor and I were trying to do on our own, it was a response to that meeting. And then ultimately, we asked for the entire council to approve or not, and we got that approval, correct?
Correct.
So...
After my immediate response to it, so I appreciate it.
And, and that response was completely appropriate by you.
And I appreciate that, but, and that's the way this has played out. So, you know, we are all, we all know how well that this town has come together in the past to raise funds to hand over to the Napa Valley Unified School District. There is no question about it. I find it interesting that the application, under all the people they're looking for, the most explanation is spent on person with expertise in environmental impact, legal contracts, building codes and land use planning, including but not limited to the knowledge of zoning and other land use restrictions of the cities or city counties in which surplus space and real property is located. You know, that, that covers real estate agent, that covers Joe Taglavashi in town, our Director of Public Works. I, if, if you feel that this, that a town council member is gonna be presented on there to make the best choice, then I'm fine with it.
And we provided, I and we as a council provided, any of us to volunteer to apply. That was the request. Does anybody have an interest? The Vice Mayor volunteered, so it was an opportunity that all of us had. So with that, I'm still supportive of having a council member apply to the committee. I've heard one and potentially a second member of this council agreeing to that. So I'll go ahead and ask for, I will make the motion that we authorize the Vice Mayor to apply for the 7-11 committee. I'm trying to see if we need to have a formal wording here. I'll move that we appoint the Vice Mayor to apply to represent Yountville as part of the Napa Valley Unified School District's 7-11 committee regarding the small schools' closure discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
I just hit my motion button, I don't know, are we trying to do this electronically or are we giving up? Let's just do it verbally, so there's a motion and a second. I think because we have four members, we'll do a roll call vote, just to make it clear.
Councilmember Durham?
Yes.
Councilmember Mueller?
No.
Vice Mayor Dorman?
Yes.
Mayor Dunbar?
Yes. And so that motion passes three to one. And so that motion passes three to one. I appreciate the very candid and thoughtful discussion. I understand that it's a... It's not only a passionate issue for all of us, but it's a very important one, and so we take this all very seriously. I would also just state, and I know this is going to happen, but if Vice Mayor is selected to be on this committee, that we get regular reports out, especially prior to our scheduled council meetings, but not waiting for those.
Absolutely.
So that through the town manager, we can be kept up to date on any conversations and potential input that we can get from the rest of the council.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you all for that. We're going to move on now to staff informational reports. Do we have any?
No.
Council meeting reports, comments, and agenda items. Napa County Flood Control, there was nothing noteworthy to report at the last meeting. League of California Cities update. Let's start either Vice Mayor or Councilmember Mueller. Do you have anything to update on that?
Nope.
No committee?
Coming up.
Okay. So I will add that I did testify last week, both as mayor and as the second vice president of the League of California Cities at the Local Government Committee in the State Assembly in support of Senate Bill 5, which would provide approximately $2 billion annually for affordable housing, infrastructure, and other community development projects. And that bill did pass out of committee and is headed to the Appropriations Committee next month. Also, let's see, other reports and announcements. Do we have any other reports and announcements before I get to those that I have? As I just stated in the previous item, the Vice Mayor and I have been invited by Superintendent Masetti and members of the staff and board to meet with them on Thursday, July 18th, for a briefing prior to the 7-11 committee process moving more forward. And the school board will take up the 7-11 committee applications at their August 8th board meeting. I also wanted to recognize the estate Yountville is hosting again, August 1st through the 4th, the 21st Annual V Foundation Wine Celebration Weekend that raises money for cancer research. So far in those 20 years plus, they've raised over $108 million, and they have called Yountville home to the wine celebration weekend for over two decades. There is a public research symposium between 9:30 and 11:30 on Saturday, August 3rd, and their area of focus with cancer research changes every year. This year, their primary focus is on canine cancer research. They will have experts from around the world available for free at that symposium, and the rest of their weekend is principally to raise more, I think it was somewhere in the high teens last year that they were able to raise. I believe that's all we have. Any other reports or announcements, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. That reminded me, speaking of fundraisers and the estate Yountville, they are opening to the public the first annual firefighter and first responders barbecue fundraiser with chef Adam Perry Lang, Saturday, July 27th, 12 to 3, at the pavilion between the shops at The Marketplace and Vintage House. Event open to the public, donations appreciated, all proceeds go to local firemen and first responders fund. Live music and the chef will be cooking his famous barbecue.
Very good. Free. You hear that, town manager? Free, free barbecue. I believe that takes care of our business for this evening, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to our next regular meeting, Tuesday, August 6th, and noting that that, I believe, is going to start at 4:00 PM based on interviews. Is that confirmed?
It may be.
It will have to... We'll get it.
It'll be earlier than 6 o'clock to be posted.
Yes.
So I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
And then on the...
Understood. So there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.